Nice, then I think it would get approved. I, I, I would stake the place out and make a commitment to it. Make sure the house is the house that you're gonna really build. And it's not just a set of plans off of a book. We're making this thing work, then I think it could get approved. So, I, I don't, according to the first three votes here, I, I, those are my opinions for the straw poll and I guess the chairman will give you advice whether to, come back in a month and after we have a straw poll and I still walk through there. I've, I've gone through there, visited. But I don't know exactly where the garage is. I don't know exactly where the setbacks are, stuff like that. So, that's a roundabout way, so I don't know what, I don't know what the conclusion of that is, but those are my thoughts, right?
Mr. Helm, just what is your general opinion on the house matters?
My general opinion is I think that you brought it down to a piece that you can get. Again, I think probably, don't forget the schedule. Schedule, yeah. That, exactly what we're doing. This. I would probably be fine with that. I would probably be fine with that. Uh, Mr. Helm, I probably, you know, aside, you know, it's, I really would like to stand and look at, because that, uh, setback is, we don't setback, really doesn't bother me that much, but I'd just like to see, standing there looking at, okay, it's 20 feet, but then you're looking at, say, tree shrub wall. I just would like to have that view, because I've got it to find it so bad. What would it be, you know, possibly?
So, out from the straw poll, uh, we have approximately four-ish votes against one rebuttal. Possible, uh, which would mean the vote would not be acceptable, uh, the application. So, uh, if you have choices of action, uh, you can ask us to proceed with a vote and, see where the actual vote point comes out, that's one option. Another option is to ask for a continuance, so you have time to gather more supporting evidence to justify your position and, potentially schedule the sites as of which, uh, substantially you're presenting the president. Or you could withdraw the application without present prejudice. Reproach, uh, with your clients and decide on alternate, of course, that, uh, how we're going.
Would be, like, do vote on it, deny it?
One, you can't come back with the same or substantially similar request, you have to be substantially different. Request, or if it was denied, you simply have to make the house fit within the second. It, it's not a simple, it's not a simple, just a simple majority, there have to be four yeses. All kind of decision, call voting. Chairman, on explanation, and reasons why you would want to. Alright, so you'd like to request that the application be withdrawn without prejudice? Alright, so understanding that, if you choose to submit a different application, you will have to pay the filing fee over again and the advertising and all of that. The continuance does not incur any extra fees that allows you time to come back in October or November or what have you, but the application stays act. Yeah, they could, and you can still withdraw. Yeah, absolutely. Alright, so, the request I'm hearing is that the applicant would like to continue this application to the October meeting. If someone would like to make a motion on that continuance, and I think a possible condition of the continuance, if the site visit is to occur prior to the next meeting.
I wouldn't put that as a condition, I think it's just a recommendation.
Alright, and everybody will strongly recommend it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, new application 21-40, to the October meeting.
Which is October,
two-third, Wednesday is the,
20 at the bottom, so, and if you find that,
With a recommendation for a site visit.
Uh, a recommendation, so, if you find that there is not sufficient time, you could ask, instead of requesting by email to the zoning building office. Then if you're running out of time, you can ask that it then be further continued to, or people be sent down to take it. Is there a second, um, also? All in favor of the motion? I, I, uh, the meeting day does not continue to October, if you have time to. Thank you very much, thank you. Alright, so now, uh, we'll be moving on to the new business, according to the agenda. And the first item under new business is, application 21-42, Donald's Corporation, the owner and applicant. Location 636 Medicom, Lot 13, Key Lot 1. Requesting for variance under sections 32112 for relief from the maximum square footage allowed, or signs of the business zoning district. Just identify yourself, uh, for the record, and, uh, go ahead.
Bill Lucas with Bowler Engineering, formerly Bowler Engineering, now Bowler, out of Boston, Massachusetts, here on behalf of McDonald's USA.
Okay, and so tell us what you'd like to do with the yard. To the signage, I think it'd be helpful if you could explain, what are the existing, they just wrote briefly, existing signage package that's on the building, the property? What you're planning to keep of that and what you're planning to,
No problem, um. I recognize a few of the board members here, you were probably, most of you were here the last time, back in 2018, when I brought this same application before us. Unfortunately, during the pandemic, the app, uh, the approval had expired for this identical application that we're going to talk about tonight. Existing McDonald's has two signs on the site, one is a existing freestanding sign along Medicom Avenue. The second is a existing wall sign along the front of the building, which also faces Medicom Avenue. Says McDonald's, that is a 65-square-foot boxed area of the existing sign. What we're proposing at this point in time is to keep the existing freestanding sign as-is, and replace the front wall sign. So it will no longer say McDonald's, instead it will just say M logo, that's their typical, now with their new prototypical buildings and architectural features. And that is a boxed area of 14 square feet, so we're reducing an existing non-conforming sign, 65-square-foot boxed area down to 14-square-feet boxed area. So a reduction of 50 square feet, that is the entire application. Just a change of that front wall sign.
And so currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there are two large Ms and two windows.
That could be the case, but, uh, as part of the rebuild, those will be removed.
So, so essentially, we're removing even more signage, that's the two large Ms, whatever they're, they look like, maybe they're, I don't know. They like, I don't know, those are coming out of the window.
Absolutely.
So the only things we're going to have are the existing freestanding tile on, out by the road.
Correct.
And then we're going to have the new front wall sign that is just, you have,
That is also correct, and I believe that was in everybody's package, this is the M logo that we're referring to. You do not have it?
I've never seen it before, so I should, I'd like to see.
The, the golden arch, you've never, kidding?
It's right there.
Eric's not been around. I think technically, at the moment we're speaking to this, the entry and exit signs have Ms on top of them, which is sort of final letter of the law, the M, could be considered advertising signage, uh, those are, those plans today as-is.
I believe those are to remain as-is.
Alright, so, but even if we added in, there's four, right, you might each drive way.
I believe so, I'm just gonna take a peek at the plan again, yes, there are four.
So, and, uh, based on my own observation, I estimated the M to be about 12 inches by 12 inches, so, each of them, uh, a foot, so, I won't say four square feet total, but even with that, you still be reducing the amount of square footage that, uh, what it is.
That is correct.
Uh, if you just speak a little about the new M that's on the front wall, uh, just describe the lighting that is built on that.
It is an internally lit M, so it's low yellow.
Which is,
LED style.
So, which is permitted in this zone, that is internally illuminated sign. Would there be any consideration given that, since you're asking for, although it's reduced, it's still a larger quantity of signage, uh, that be ordered, with any consideration of,
Sorry, well technically, we're not increasing.
You're over what the ordinance allows.
That is correct.
You're decreasing the total, so it's less than.
Yes.
You're still over,
It's still not, not conformity with respect to the quantity.
So you're asking for a quantity above what is allowed.
Correct.
Would any consideration be given to, or be to look favorably upon, the quantity being over, that the internal illumination be a shitty, or, uh, a low light treatment, or, absolutely.
Uh, that is not their typical, uh, package, and I think, uh, generally speaking, if the signage package that they are presenting is consistent with the other surrounding, uh, properties on Medicom Avenue, so I don't think what they're proposing is that egregious.
Yeah, I just wonder, saying we play there.
Well, without, 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 you know, I am speaking for McDonald's, but they would probably hold the line on that, there, obviously, they would probably want more, in this case, I mean, applications in other communities where they want more signs, they would typically like to have one on the side of this building above the entry door, just to identify, uh, to anybody who is just parked their vehicle, wants to come to the building, direct them to that location, but, in this case, they're not gonna get it, you know, and we, we understand that likewise, you know, they have a frontage on Laurel Lane, and in a lot of communities, you would have an opportunity to place a sign there. They're not even approaching that, they understand that what they have is what they will get, and they're, you know, their new model is a smaller logo that they'll go with, and they think it's consistent with the package that's out there now, and better. From that standpoint.
Is this internal illumination system intensity controlled? Is there either a manual or an automatic intensity control that's into that system?
That is a good question, I don't know that answer, um, I would have to ask the architect, I'm just trying to read some of the frame detailing here. It says electrical, uh, 0.85 amps, 120 volts.
I don't see an implication on the detailing itself, and I guess what I'm wondering is, would, would the, the signage manufacturer of McDonald's and R be amenable to having some sort of set it and forget it manual intensity control? So that once this is put in, it can be balanced to its surroundings, so it is not quite the glowing beacon of french fries that the neighbors may or may not object to. Uh, like an dip, an internal dip.
So that is the, that's the request?
That's not just a question.
It's, yeah, it's a question as to whether or not that's something they may or may not be amenable to.
I, I, I would assume that they could be amenable to that, but then they would probably want to understand what the range would be from your end of just, uh, these days you can do just about anything, right?
Fair enough.
I, I mean, on, on the, on the drive-through, for instance, uh, they have speakers, uh, that the volume ramps up and down based on ambient noise. Uh, so that way it's not overpowering to the neighbors and just gets the, uh, you know, that spoken voice to the person in the vehicle, and not projecting it through your house.
Be interesting to point about the sign and internally illuminating. We are interested in, right now that here you are reducing the sign, it's gonna be better than it was, I, I would agree with all that. But, you know, externally illuminated, you say it fits the area, this board slowly is trying, as fast as we can, but it's still a very slow process, trying to improve, what's in Medicom Avenue. That's something to, for us in 10 years, but slowly we want to improve it, and if there is a way to have this thing lighted up, externally illuminated, down lighting, and be better looking than what you proposed, we'd be certainly interested in it, I realize that we've already approved this once, maybe we might just go through on that, I'm not sure. Would be much more amenable to that, and, you know, I have been to McDonald's before, and I've seen many of them in many different parts of the country, and, and, uh, there's some fancy towns, there is no internally illuminated signs, you know, they're, getting, believe you're driving by McDonald's, same food, I, all that, but it's much more pleasant for you than, than, big thing on Medicom Avenue.
And, and, and I'm sure, I'm sure you're talking about the freestanding sign, because that is, you know,
Or freestanding sign, like that?
Yes, freestanding, not, not dealing with that system exists.
Understood, I'm just saying, when you refer to the sign, to the size of the, the proposed sign, I mean, we're, again, it's 14-square-foot box, but act, the actual lit portion of that is, is 4.9 square feet, so,
Is this McDonald's?
That's, that's fairly small.
Is, is it, is it, um, open 24 hours a day?
That's a good question, I, I don't know that answer.
We, we were, one, one of the things we were going to get to at some point was, what would be the hours that the sign would be, that, so we'd have to determine, you know, if this thing gets switched off, half an hour after the restaurant closes, what is the, you know, what, what are the parameters for this?
Uh, typically it's storing hours of operational.
24 hours?
Hours of operation.
So, if it is open 24 hours, then it would be on,
24 hours, I'm sure they would run it that way, yes.
Um, I, I don't know if there are any existing conditions on the property which specify the hours of operation for one of this. Any prior, you know, if this, this, that's, Any prior, you know, if this business has registered hours of operation for the town or something like that.
It has not been twenty-four hours, uh, definitely, never been closed, it's never been. Dude.
We don't have any. If internally illuminated signs are allowed in. Now, who was raising, while they're allowed, I'm going to see what's hard. No, and it, it, to that point, if, I just, we, we've been last eight months talking about being all. Thanks, you're all involved in those conversations. You're working slowly on this. I'm a professional.
I would agree with that, and I couldn't mean it that way, but I, over time, I know you've been working aggressively on it, especially the past several years, but the past. Ten years. Reverse of.
It's been an ice, it's been an ice or forty, fifty.
Yes.
If not the side of town we want.
Is it possible to put in any approval for that to have it only illuminated during opening hours or operation now?
Yeah, I mean, that's. I can really, of course, that the illumination is one of the hours of operation. Or, you know, within half an hour of closing, someone cleaning up the restaurant and shutting it off. I think that's purely typical, uh, once we're approving lighting at many times.
Generally speaking, signage lighting would be only hours of operation, it's not gonna contribute to safety and security on the site anymore.
Let me go to the public, is anyone in the public portion, yes, man, please, uh, come up and identify your name as a rest.
Hello, um, apologies, my first time in front. Um, my name is Janine Remy, and I live at eight Laurel Lane, which is diagonally across from the drive-through on the side on Laurel Lane side. Um, I was confused when I got the letter because I'm wondering why they're asking for a variance, because the very first sentence says. Um, the square footage allows for a twenty square foot sign, and yet he was explaining that it's only a fourteen square foot.
So I clarify that for you, it's the total sum of all the signage on the site, so you have to count the giant big red McDonald's sign.
Since you mentioned that, um, I wondered, and I agree that we should be cleaning up Medicom. Um, that sign is, it's above the building, so I live across the street, my second floor, it shines into. The bedrooms on the second floor, and I do see the golden arches during the entire time of, and during the hours of operation, it is very annoying. I know it's been there for years, and somebody said it's grandfathered in, um, but I wondered if because of the new face that McDonald's is trying to show people that they're. You know, getting away from the nineteen seventies neon big huge signs. Um, and I understand that they probably don't want to take it down, only because if they do, they won't be approved. I don't know how that works with the zoning, but I'm asking that you consider that. Because I think, well, I'm glad that they did take the french fries off the roof, that was something that I was happy about. Because they did have illuminated french fries on the side of the building, and I'm glad those are gone. Um, but I also agree that the sign, the freestanding one is way too big and massive for that. Strip of land, there are no other signs in that area that are huge like that and that are that bright.
So unfortunately, the existing sign is that grandfathered in, unless they tied it and tear it down, they want to build something new, then they have some jurisdiction over it. We can ask now, you say it's shining bedrooms, is that eliminated on a twenty-four hour basis?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure what their hours of operation, and since I don't remember any, didn't know, I'm not sure. What there are.
So you do have some.
I just know at night I have to close, I mean, I can't, it's just.
So I think that may not be able to be eliminated entirely, because it gets dark at five, six p.m., the sign is certainly going to be on.
Um, I know you had said, said that they could turn, they could turn it down, so.
Again, that sign, we can't really do much about it because it exists in this thing. Uh, if asked the application, um, we can contain any changes to the current sign and package. But we can condition that the signage, uh, illumination.
There's really nothing for that. Now, if the sign is in disrepair, um, or somehow fails, they are, are they allowed to?
Yes.
Reproduce, I mean, so that they would.
As long as the, it's a little nuanced, but as long as the physical framework that holds the sign is still there. You can repaint it in the same manner, so as long as they don't rip down the structure that's supporting that sign. If it got cracked or the wind damaged, the plastic lens, they can put it back exactly the way it is today, as long as they take it.
So if it failed from the bottom, say, during a storm, they couldn't replace it, is that correct?
The whole, yeah, if the whole thing collapsed, if, if it was due to a storm, they may be able to, you know, that was an act of God, they didn't take it back. You're allowed to repair or repaint.
So that would be there forever if they so choose, is that correct?
It could be there forever. My guess would be that. Pretty sad. You've got a minute, tell us. It's probably pretty good.
And what about the entrance and exit signs you didn't mention?
Yeah, tho- those are existing, they're not planned to be.
So those are also illuminated.
Yeah, they're also, they're, they're illuminated, they're there. Not asking for any changes to the signs.
So, so this is just the front face sign that's gonna be on the building.
Correct.
Facing Medicom, not facing Laurel.
Correct, from the drawings that are submitted, it does not appear that there's anything illuminated basically. But these are just. If they have a walk behind the drive-through, that can be used.
It's in the back, I think.
Uh, no, that's metal lettering.
I said walk behind the sign, so you know, they have on the location, because they have semi truck, they take on the.
No, it's just metal, just metal letters.
Okay, and that's really more of a, say, wayfinding correction, not. So thank. Say, just. So I'm hoping with the removal of the french fries, um, makes other improvements if they have. If they have a lessened impact on your property, recognizing that certain things are grandfathered in. We can't.
I wasn't aware.
About those items.
Right, okay, so I just want to get clarification on that also, I don't know if this is the right form, I do have another question.
Don't give it a try.
Okay. As the people are coming around the back through the drive-through, so they give their order and they come around. There was a fence, it's a stockade fence which has been blown down during a storm. So that portion of the fence is no longer standing, and so the lights are coming into my kitchen window. Um, they also had planted apavidi trees, which were years and years ago, so they got really large, and the town came through and they chopped them. In half, so now I'm losing, not only with the fence, but I'm also losing the barrier for the trees, and so now it's really. Kind of going into the living in, I mean, the dining in.
So I mean, never says, yeah, so I think if we cut all through, I would go right in, unless.
Yeah.
Um, unless there is something on file for previous approvals that the fence had to be there. Or in the ordinance outright, there's something that would indicate that the fence had to separate the parking area from residential area, although it doesn't directly button the residential area, Laurel Lane is in between. So unless there's some existing provisionally ordinance that they're out of compliance with. Which someone could file a complaint, um, with the office.
Okay.
Um, to have a compliance check on that, but in terms of doing anything about that, it really is outside the per, the application, the application.
It's for the signage, I got you.
Now, if they were redesigning the drive-through and taking part in a lot of those things with that application.
So I would just apply, go to the zoning.
So, yeah.
Office and ask.
If you have a concern, you think there may be a compliance issue, you could go to the zoning office, or there is zoning enforcement office or. Expect the property, um, to determine whether or not anything they have there, sometimes there are requirements for certain.
Right, I believe.
The public record.
I believe the fence was required to be put about some point in time, but I don't have the paperwork. And it, and it's in disrepair, so it would have to, have to be replaced, because it's.
It's a good time to do it, with all the work.
Well, that's what I asked, I did go over there today, and I asked some of the construction people, and I did talk to the foreman. He didn't know anything about the signage, but I did ask, you know, things like that, and he didn't know anything about the fence, they were only doing the building, so that's why I was attending tonight.
Let's have him come back up. Yeah, just to help her out. So I just clarify, is the large existing sign that's on the freestanding one, that also going to be, or is on hours of operation?
I would assume it is, yes.
So it will be, all, all the illuminated signage will be operated during hours of business.
I don't think McDonald's is opposed to that.
So if that were to be conditioned, that is typical.
We would consider that fair, yes.
Do you have any further thoughts on halo illumination or other type of illumination on the front wall sign?
I, I believe internal illumination is what McDonald's would want, and as noted, I think it's my right.
You're entitled to that, thanks. Is anyone else?
As far as the, the fence, um, I, I don't believe this application addressed that matter, again, probably because we did it. Two years ago, uh, with, with that in mind, but, you know, I, I think. Pointed out, it's probably the time to address it with somebody, and, uh, I'll, I'll make a note to. My contact at McDonald's and let them, I've, I've taken down notes about your comments and see how they can be addressed.
Any other comments?
I have an estimate as to the size of the existing, uh, McDonald's sign.
Not with me, I was just checking through my notes about that, but, uh, I do have some materials back in my office that there's. Wide range of McDonald's signs that they've used over time, this one is one of the larger ones that I've ever seen. And, and I've been working on McDonald's projects for five years, so.
What a nice.
No, that's the one I'm referring to, right.
Well, I, I'm glad we have that distinction of Warren, having.
We go on long enough, it'll become like. You may, you, you may have won, you may have.
Biggest McDonald's. Uh, with that, um, do you have any other closing remarks about your signage application?
Uh, I, I do not.
So I think the parameters that we're working with are that. Existing quantity of signage that was present on the site will be maintained except for the existing written out McDonald's sign. Have a notation of what the size of that was.
Yes, it is sixty-five square foot boxed or thirty-five.
Yeah.
If you take every individual dimension.
Five box sign is being replaced with fourteen square foot.
Side, correct.
That reduction, regardless of what else is there.
Fifty square feet reduction.
You'll be limited to now the new total signage, sign, which you take that.
Correct.
You can't, you cannot add more signage without coming back.
That is correct.
Does anyone have a motion on this application?
I'll see if I can get the math to work on this one, uh, I'll move approval on application twenty-one dash forty-two. McDonald's Corporation, owner and applicant, six thirty-six Medicom Avenue, Platte map thirteen E lock one. Request for variance under section thirty-two dash one twelve, or relief from the maximum square footage allowed for signs in business zoning district. In approving this variance, we will note that the hardship is due to the unique characteristic of the subject land or structure. Uh, and it's not due to the general characteristics surrounding area, uh, this is the business district in town, this is the one place where large quantities of signage, and particularly. Large quantities illuminated signage are already present in the neighborhood. The hardship is not the result of prior action of the applicant, uh, they are renovating an existing building which has been well patronized within the town of Warren for many, many years. Uh, in attempting to improve the overall quality and look of property, and this signage refit is part of that overall upgrade. Uh, granting the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, uh, we have already noted that this is the one area where such signage could be considered appropriate within town limits. Uh, and we will, we do find that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary, in so much as the applicant is actually proposing an overall reduction. In the amount of total signage on the site, the existing freestanding sign, uh, adjacent to Medicom Avenue. And the illuminated entry and exit signs will remain as is, and the large sixty-five square foot McDonald's sign mounted to the building. Will be removed and replaced with a fourteen square foot internally illuminated McDonald's logo. Resulting in an overall reduction of approximately fifty-one square feet of signage. Uh, if we were not to grant this variance, we will note that it would be more than a mere inconvenience to the applicant. As there would then be no signage present on the building itself, hampering their overall marketing efforts. We will condition this approval on the fact that the internal illumination in all onsite signage will operate only during hours of operation. So when the business closes for the evening, the internally illuminated signage will turn off. And we will further condition it on there being a level of intensity control provided on the new building mounted sign. That level of control to be no more restrictive than full intensity down to fifty percent intensity in order to be able to provide. Some level of balancing and intensity control, should that sign be deemed to be too intense.
Any other conditions or evidence? Back to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed by two zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, wait, hold on. Yes, that's matter on the agenda for new business, application twenty-one forty-three. Albert Ante owner and Derek Ethier, the applicant, three twenty-six Market Street, plant twenty-three lock forty. Request for specialty permit under, uh, section thirty-two one sixty-six, allow the operation of a law or personal subject. And section thirty-two one sixty-nine installs thirty-two by eighty orange freestanding sign. If somebody are representing the applicant, please come forward and identify for a day.
Derek, et here, thirty-four Bowen Street, Patucket Road.
Alright, uh, so give us a brief description of type of business we're planning to operate and the sign and why you think.
So we've been operating since July sixth, we weren't aware, uh, we had to apply, but once we became aware, we did, uh, the signage is.
So you paddle. So you paddle, well, you move into this building?
Yes.
It's an existing building.
Yeah, it was Scott Sylvia Photography.
Yeah, and so you're now a law, that's the type of business.
No, like I said, as when we became aware, we applied.
The special needs was needed, in force, you're asking us. Second part, you want to install something?
Yeah, so the sign was already existing, it's a die-bond sign, it's kind of, I don't know if you guys have seen it.
Or anything in the packet that was written in the sign?
So I believe so, at least the dimensions. So we affixed a vinyl sign to the die-bond sign that's already existing, it was already there, it was never taken down.
So what are, what is the new sign?
It's just the name, the attorney's and a phone number, and I believe the facts.
I'll say, I'm familiar with that sign, I drive by just about every day. It's just, it's a big vinyl sign and it's literally just the names.
It's really, because it's a white sign with black.
So would this qualify then as re-facing an existing sign? Is the signage variance necessary?
They told us when we, they asked if we had a sign, we said we affixed a sign to the current sign and they asked us to amend, I think we applied, we had to amend it to include the signage.
So what is the long-term plan, that white vinyl sign is the sign?
That sign, no, that's a temporary sign, yeah, we plan to install, so we, we were unaware of how many signs can exist on a property at once, I think we heard just one, but now that I'm hearing the McDonald's situation.
Oh, you're in a different zone.
Okay.
Rural business, they're exceeding, right now they're exceeding the amount of maximum signage that you can have in the rural business.
Yeah, because there's others, there are other signs already on the front.
So this sign has been there, I think the golf range installed, I think he installed the sign in the beginning of the property if you're coming from, from Swansea, from, from that way. But the sign that we affixed, our sign too, was, has been existing for, it was Scott Sylvia Photography.
So, here's a question.
Yep.
Um, so are you a tenant in this building?
Yes.
So then is it the golf course?
No, we're not the golf course.
Driving range.
Same parcel.
Yeah.
Same parcel.
Same parcel, is it the same owner as the golf?
Albert Monty is the owner, he, he actually, so there's, like I said, I, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the, with the buildings, one is, we're on, we're in the tan building next to it, it's like a pinkish building.
Yep.
He's, he's opening that up, the landlord is, has one family fun center, he's installing a golf, a mini golf. I think he's a new ice cream, and then the golf, the golf range behind it, so they're technically, they're three businesses on the front.
So I'm wondering, when we approve the family fun center, was there a signage piece to that application, does anyone remember?
No. It wasn't.
So with, with the family fun center, so actually, like I said, it's, our sign is temporary, there's going to be, the family fun center is going to be the top sign, we're, we're planning on putting our sign below that, on the same structure.
And I guess this isn't necessarily a question for you, it's more for the solicitor and the town planner. Is this a situation where we're actually dealing with a landlord that has multi-tenant signage and they need to deal with that as a unit?
Way the ordinance is, is written, there's the, if you have multi-businesses in the rural business, eighteen square feet is the maximum amount of signage that you can have, they're exceeding that. In addition, the signage has to be consistent, so they have two multiple signs now and they're not consistent in their design. But the golf, the driving range also has banners up, and those are illegal in the rural business. So, the, whether it's the tenant or the landlord, we have to get a handle on what the signage is. So as Mr. Nice from noticed, and I mean, I've driven by there often too, that, that sign has been up. I think, you know, similar, when the, the use changes, the sign changes.
But part of the question here is, we don't have an accurate tally, so it's not just that your sign can't exceed the square foot, it's the total
Yeah, I understand.
Signs that we present on the site, we don't know exactly what is that.
I'm not aware either, I can talk to the landlord for sure.
It might be beneficial that, because I think what we really need since you're a tenant.
Yep.
But there's a similar to, let's say, don't like tourists, that would be a bigger, but there is an overall signage strategy in the whole property that the landlord provides a big sign that each tenant has a certain amount of space and you know, a package of signage that we need to find exactly how many square feet. I think that's sort of what we need for this property, because it is a multi-business property.
Okay.
To the chair, I, I wonder, just trying to think, think about how to approach this, because this, uh, this does need to be a comprehensive plan with this property, because there are multiple tenants on there. Going to Mr. Rui's point, sounds like some of the banners up there are already, are illegal. Is it worthwhile to have the, the owner come before us at some point with a
Yeah, I, I think you can separate this, you can prove that special use.
That's why I'm getting separate special use with the understanding that there's going to be a more comprehensive sign for the total property.
There, there, that's the plan.
Yes.
So he's in the, like, he's in the process of, I don't know if you guys have seen the development, like, so this week.
Yes, he came to us about the golf and the children and the ice cream and all that.
Definitely.
Cows.
The cows are big with the kids, yeah.
So.
We don't hear that.
We can allow
Scratch that from the rest.
We can allow you to keep your temporary signs in place when this is being resolved, I think we can decouple the signage portion and direct that towards the plan of the property.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, because if you have an existing sign, so then you just face that to be one thing. You know, I say, I do a lot of, I do a lot of these secret buildings. They just, they don't even have to go to the foundation, it's one.
The existing sign is not.
Yes, so, okay.
So basically, he has a sign that's up there right now, and he wanted a different sign.
So the sign that was up there was for Scott Sylvia Photography, but then I believe the golf, like I said, he put like another road sign at the beginning of the property. But the one that was there, we, we refaced, as you said, the, the sign that was there.
So we're, so we're going to separate administratively, speak about the signage, we'll say, is not germane to you as a tenant. The onus falls on the landlord to come here with a couple of signage packs. In the meantime, your temporary sign will identify the business to remain there until that's, so we're going to take that piece out, so really what we're considering here, special use, whether the use of a law office, so. So.
Yes, absurd intro. So what I would suggest, and I will have the code enforcement officer advise the property owner that he needs to come before the zoning board with the signage plan.
Very good. So setting aside the signage, give us a brief description of your law office, what are your hours of operation? How many clients, you know, what's your typical square traffic, what are the things in general, I mean, I think we know what a law office is.
Alright, so there's two, there's two attorneys, we have another attorney who, he's just, well, he's not an attorney yet, he took the bar exam, we're hoping to bring a third. We're general practice right now, but traffic probably anywhere from like ten to fifteen a week, just a couple, you know, probably a couple a day. Yeah, just a couple a day, you know what I mean, right now, you know, obviously, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty early, um.
What are, what are your current hours of operation?
Where we, we get there at nine, we leave around three or four, sometimes five. Nine to five, you know, probably the long, on the longer side.
And is that five days a week?
Five days a week, yes.
Alright, so one of the things, when we have a new business, we put conditions on what are your hours of operations, so are you happy with nine to five, five days a week?
Yeah.
If I could jump in, the one thing, because I am an attorney and, as well, and I also kind of have, you know, my boss isn't listening in, I also kind of banker's hours, but, um, you know, there are times when you get, you're on trial, you're pulling off, you're pulling long days and weekends.
Yep.
Is that something you're anticipating?
I mean, there are days where we're there long, you know, after five, but I wouldn't say it's like an operating hour, it's just we're there, you know, it's not, will the door be locked and we're not having clients and, you know, in and out after five.
That's
Sounds good.
Your, your business hours, your client hours.
Nine to five.
If you as one of the attorneys, whether it's in the practice, are there using the office space, you need to increase or whatever. That's not really your business.
Exactly.
Would this be a time to ask for slightly longer hours, just in case somebody tries to feed an ice cream cone to a cow and they get their hand bitten, it's
I'm pretty sure you want them to call you when that happens, rather than just go knock on the door.
Okay.
You're happy with nine?
Nine to five, yeah, I mean, aside from the cow.
So nine to five, five days. And you said, right now you have about ten to fifteen clients.
Yep.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions about the plan or?
Parking would be provided within the parking lot for the adjacent businesses?
So yeah, right now it's kind of separated by cones, and on the right, if you're looking at it, is the golf, the golf range, and then to the left is for the other two businesses.
Is the eventual plan to have those spaces marked in some way?
They're marked by paint, I'm not sure, you know, I know he, he got a quote to get that thing paved and it was like a hundred thousand dollars, so I'm not sure, I think right now it's, the gravel is there, I, I'm not sure how long.
I think, when we approved the fun center, I think we told them that we strike or identify.
So they are identified by, you know, both, both lots are identified with, you know, yellow paint.
And I believe the application with the fun center included parking the entire property.
I think my question was more, is the expectation that is the expectation that there would somehow be like a sign demarcating two or four spaces for your business as
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, we do have like two right in front of our building, which is what the attorneys use, and then there's, there's plenty of room for, for patrons to come in and out for both, it's a, it's a fairly large lot.
So what's in the, what is in the lease?
No, it's just, it's just pretty much, like I said.
Any other questions or comments?
The owner of the property comes back. Representant.
Alright, so we'll briefly ask if there's anyone in the public, not seeing anyone, um, close to the portion of the hearing. Uh, do you have anything else you want to add about your business?
I don't.
There are anyone who'd like to make a motion on this application? Noting of the signage portion.
I'll take a stab at this.
At what, I think that's most appropriate.
I'll make it so, no, I'm just kidding. Alright, I move approval of application number twenty-one forty-three. Derek Ether, oh, there we go, Albert Monty owner and Derek Ether applicant, three twenty-six Market Street, Platte Map twenty-three lot forty, twenty-three lot forty-three. Request for a special use permit under sections thirty-two dash one six-six, allow operation of a law firm or a personal service business. And section thirty-two dash one sixty-nine, install a thirty-two by eighty-four freestanding sign in the rural business zoning district. As noted before, we are administratively separating the signage aspect of this as it is germane, as the applicant is not the owner of the property. However, moving forward on the special use permits, it will be noted that this type of business is a permitted use in the rural business zone. As a board, we do find that the special use will be compatible with the neighboring land uses. The business that was at the dislocation previous was a photography studio, it's scattered throughout this specific business zone, there are other such type businesses. Special use will not create a hazard in the neighborhood, we've heard testimony today that this business has been in operation for some period of time. And we've also heard some testimony as to how this business operates within their hours of operation, along with the larger business operation of the golf course, mini golf and ice cream store. And based on the testimony, we've heard there will not be significant overlap with foot traffic, and it's not the type of business that's going to create many sort of heavy traffic with only possibly ten to fifteen clients coming in a week. We do find that the special, in granting the special use, that it is compatible with the community comprehensive plan. Again, we're always supportive of new businesses coming into the rural business, rural, I can't talk right now, to the rural business zone. And we do find that by increasing yet another business in this town, I think public welfare will be served. As a condition, we do grant, we do indicate that the hours of operation will be restricted to nine AM to five PM. That's compliant operation, compliant operation will also be limited to five days.
Any other conditions or amendments? Second. Get all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Of course. So if you want to make a separate motion, that's Oh, yeah, this, this is not, I'm not continuing yet, that. Alright, so you would like to withdraw the signage, that's what, so is there a motion to withdraw the signage portion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signage portion. Have the owner or name. I don't believe there are any other items unless anyone has any administrative notes they need to offer. Not hearing any, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.